I pause the record.
We're ready. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is December fourteenth at seven oh one in the evening. I'm gonna call it to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, everyone, and I think we decide to do a roll ball. See, you're good. Okay, Maureen's gonna do the roll. June Daly.
Present. Andrea Miller here. Diane Jorsey here. Tim Zigmar.
Yeah.
Brian Rogan has to be excused. Chairman Dealey.
Here.
Pamela, I believe, has to be excused.
Yes, you did.
Alternate Steve Biella Jr.
Here.
And alternate John Bacon have been excused. So you have two regular members excused, including them, the alternate that we did last week.
And Steve Biella, we're gonna ask you to be seated for the meeting. And we're still looking forward to the time we actually can get off of Zoom land and kind of come in for them. But for tonight, you are seated, okay?
Okay.
All right, thanks. For the record, Kim, if you have an item that's continuing, we'll do it at the time of that item comes up, but we will want to make sure that he was present last week for the beginning of the major committee items, so we'll just get to that.
Yeah, we'll get, we have a last one. Okay, so the first item is actually the bond reductions and releases. We have thirty to thirty-six production screen site bond release point planting installed twenty twenty-two per resettlement agreement.
So I'm gonna ask you to please postpone that item. We're working on compliance.
Okay, and is that going to the January eighteenth meeting? All right. Do we have a motion? All right. Mr. Zigmar has a motion. Ms. Jorsey has the second. For the discussion, all those in favor. Thank you, Steve.
And then before you read the next item, it actually was inadvertent, or not inadvertent, but it was a mistake to put it on the agenda. After we posted it, we found that it was not a planning and zoning commission, but it's a bond the town has. It's not a planning and zoning commission matter, so.
So we could scratch it off.
We look at some.
Yeah, no reason.
Is there a motion necessary? I guess. Why not?
Go ahead. Make a motion to remove the request of Matt Ochi, project manager of the town, item on the agenda. Okay, we have motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, June. I'll give this one to June.
Gotta get her on the record.
Further discussion, all those. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Steve. Okay, next up is discussion with FHI Studios concerning development of text amendments as identified with FHI, excuse me, zoning review related to affordable housing as recommended in the POCD and AHP. And I think we have Francisco with us. Hey, there you are. How do you do? Merry Christmas. Police Navidad. All right, well, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'm gonna do a brief intro, if you don't mind. This is Jim. So just to bring everybody up to date, I think what we're gonna focus on tonight is the senior housing provisions in the residential zones that are currently limited to the Housing Authority. And I wanted to give everybody an update. I think we've talked about this in the whole POCD process and have this recommendation in, obviously. One of the, the major concern has been the Knights of Columbus property. The Housing Authority has had an option on that property, but has not been able to move forward. They represented to the town that they would close in July. They have not closed. We have no news from them. It was discussed by the council Tuesday night. And they're very anxious to move on and, and, and go ahead and, you know, issue an RFP to see if we can get another developer to do this senior housing that's definitely needed in the community. So this, this zoning revision is really targeted at that need.
All right, and I think that that's probably a good thing for the town to do. I'm surprised that it's taken us this long to get to that point. All right, so do we have, is there any text amendment or whatever? That's, okay, this is what's been shared with us.
So we do have a bigger package than what we pared it down to for twenty, and Francisco has that that he'll be sharing, but you.
Really? So is Francisco, do you have anything you want to share with us on this?
He's been not here, you.
Well, I guess you'll have to say that to the next one.
Yeah, it's you. It's muted. It's not us. It's you.
Francisco, are you muted?
No.
Okay.
Well. If you, if you want to share the slides, Francisco, I can try to walk them through it.
You're not here yet, though. Can you hear us? Shake your head yes or no. Yes, if you can hear us. Okay.
All right, you can hear us, but we can't hear him. Okay. Do you want to share any slides? And then Jim will try to champion it.
Can you call in or call in?
Do you want to save this for a later date?
We would really like to be able to look at the draft text so that we could then post it or send it out to the regional agency and post it so that you can take it up at your February first meeting and waiting to January to inform a lot of people.
Is that our first meeting in January? Is the eighteenth?
January, our first meeting. No, that one was never put up. I don't think it's, it would mean we had a lot of work to do on Christmas.
That's right. I'm sorry. Like, you haven't got enough.
We've got help. Now we have our new planner.
Yeah, a lot to. Um, all right, any questions?
If you, if you want, let me, sorry, for, give me a second here and I'll bring it up in my other.
The other thing is Maureen did give us a printout of the
Yes.
email, so we can actually, you know, you can look at your information.
Yes.
This is all in the.
Okay, so again, we've kind of stated the, the purpose. And we've talked about this in the, in the POCD. It's a high priority. Just starting down on the first page, the amendments. And obviously, the first, the major amendment here is that, right now, the Housing Authority is the only entity that could do this housing under this category, and we're putting or another housing provider could be a nonprofit, could be a for-profit. I think we're really focused on just getting, getting the housing units. Below that, a-again, the, in number one, same thing, we're just addressing that issue of who can do it. Under three, the affordability requirement, we talked about that in the POCD process. And we're, you know, we're, we're increasing affordability requirement versus what we usually require. So it's fifty percent of the units as a minimum, and at least twenty-five percent of the, of those unit, twenty-five percent of the overall units, fifty percent of the, you know, affordable units have to be at sixty percent or less than the median income and the others at eighty. And obviously, a lot of this.
Francisco, can, can you hear me now that you're dialed in?
Yes. All right.
All right. I am sharing my screen. I take it you cannot see my screen.
Just the, just the intro slide.
Okay, so how about? How about now?
Yes.
Okay, Jim, anything you would like to wrap up before I, I take over?
No, you can take over.
All right. As Jim was so graciously covering for me, um, we, we were, and as you all recall, we made a series of recommendations coming out of both the POCD and the Affordable Housing Plan for amendments to your zoning regulations for the purposes of enabling the development of more affordable housing and more housing in general. And we're now in the process of following up on those recommendations in drafting proposed zoning amendments. Where we have started is with the housing for elderly persons. And as both Jim and Maureen stated, the urgency around that revolves around that particular site and the opportunity before the town to hopefully develop that site in some way to accommodate elderly persons in the community. Housing for elderly persons is a very specific term that comes out of statute. It comes out of chapter one twenty-eight of Connecticut General Statute. And that statute both enables communities to develop and operate this type of housing, and it really encourages it. And the definition elderly persons, any person sixty-two years of age or older. And this type of housing is generally aimed at elderly persons with lower incomes or with any sort of mobility needs or, or any sort of needs otherwise as identified by Social Security. Developers and operators of housing for the elderly are typically housing authorities, but it's not restricted to housing authorities. Municipalities can, can develop directly, can develop and operate housing for the elderly. Nonprofit groups can, and even for-profit enterprises or any partnership in combination of those entities. So this is something a town is well within their authority to be exploring. You currently have this as allowed use in your zoning regulations, so we're really talking about amending your existing regulations to provide a little bit more flexibility and enable an authority other than your housing authority to develop this type of housing. Now, the, the amendments that we've recommended are actually very focused and, and specific. And so we're not talking about a broad rewrite of this section of your regulations. To that effect, we've drafted a memorandum. That memorandum at the top of the page summarizes the recommendations of the Affordable Housing Plan. And I think these should look all very familiar to you as we work together with you to develop these recommendations. And there were three primary recommendations in the Affordable Housing Plan. One was to allow a group other than the Housing Authority or in addition to the Housing Authority to develop this type of project. The second one was to allow a certain percentage of those units to be universally designed, basically to be accessible units, ADA accessible units. And, and the third was to require that a specified percentage of those units be reserved as affordable housing. Now, housing for the elderly is generally directed towards people with lower incomes, and that policy can be set by the operator. But we really want to ensure that whoever develops housing under this program is, is, that housing is geared towards those most in need. And we would do that by setting an affordability requirement. So the rest of our memorandum, and, and we've made this available to both Jim and Maureen, and they've shared it with Attorney Kocla for her review. We redlined the existing regulations. Basically, we show exactly what text needs to be added and what text needs to be removed from those regulations so that if and when adopted, the regulations can be amended precisely as required to, to meet our objectives. So in, in summary, we're looking to do three things. We are gonna open up development of affordable housing to other providers, and the way that reads is the conditions of establishment would be housing for elderly persons shall only be permitted if developed and operated by the Berlin Housing Authority or by a private for-profit or non-for-profit entity on land sold by the town for such purposes. So that, that last piece of this is very important. Land, land sold by the town for such purposes. That is a condition of the development of this type of housing. That puts the town in, in control of where this housing can be developed. And it could be, it could be property the town already holds, you know, assuming it's, it's, it's not protected for some other use. Or it could be a property that town goes out and acquire, acquires for this purpose. And that, that puts the town in control of the, the sale and, and the contract to develop this site. And, and it goes beyond the zoning regulations, the amount of control that that, the town has over the property when they are, when they are selling it to someone to develop. So that, that's a very important aspect of this. The next part of it is the affordability requirement. We require, we are going to require that fifty percent of units be affordable, and that is affordable as defined by Connecticut statute eight thirty G. And that at least twenty-five percent of all units, so at least half of those affordable units be aimed at households earning sixty percent or less of area median income. So those are very needy households. Affordable housing is defined as housing affordable to households earning eighty percent or less of AMI. So we're setting aside half of that for those earning sixty percent or less. So we're, we're really trying to target those most in need. Furthermore, we, we have settled on making, reserving a minimum of ten percent of units to be fully accessible. Building code, depending on the type of housing being developed, may require as much as, or no more, I should say, than about one or two percent of units to be fully accessible. We want, we want a much higher standard at ten percent because we know that when we're dealing with an elderly population that we have people that have severe mobility limitations. And we want to ensure that there are sufficient number of units to accommodate those people. In addition to the fact that this type of housing can also be used by, and people who are, are below the age of sixty-two, who have mobility impairments are potentially eligible for this type of housing. So we want to make sure the housing is available and accessible to them as well. So that, that's a summary of the amendments. All the word for word is all in the memorandum that we provided that's on the right side of the screen. In addition to that, we, we are also taking, we're, afford this opportunity to provide a, an all-encompassing definition of affordable housing. Right now, if you were to look through your zoning regulations, what you would find is that affordable housing is defined in multiple different sections of the regulations where, basically wherever you require affordable housing component, you define it for that district, and then you define it again in another district where it's required. And those definitions are not consistent across the zoning regulations. So it's a much better practice to define it once and apply this definition equally across the regulations wherever you require affordable housing. And, and so what we're doing here is we're using the state's language so that we're consistent with what the state defines as affordable housing so that whatever's developed qualifies for eight thirty G and contributes to your affordable housing count. And that basically, as I mentioned before, is defined as housing, which is deed restricted. It is set aside for those earning, for households earning eighty percent or less of area median income. The cost of that housing comprises no more than thirty percent of their income. And, and in the case here, we are stipulating that, that housing be deed restricted for a period of ninety-nine years. The, the state requires a minimum forty. And, and we're going above and beyond that to require ninety-nine years. And we're also requiring that that deed be recorded, that any covenant or restriction to the deed be recorded and filed before a final permit occupancy is issued for the housing. So we're putting in place, I think, a, a more robust affordable housing requirement that can be applied uniformly across the town and can help to ensure that when you do have affordable housing that's built, you, that you're expecting it, you understand it to be affordable, that it does in fact contribute to your affordable house, it qualifies and contributes to your affordable housing total and count. And that it is in place for a long period of time. So that's, that's the, the change that we've recommended that, I think it makes, it makes sense to go ahead and adopt that change to the affordable housing definition at the same time that we're addressing the housing for the elderly amendment. With that being said, that, that is, constitutes my presentation to you, and I'm, I'm happy to open up any questions and comments. Open, hand it over back to the chair to, to facilitate that.
Okay, thank you, Francisco. Any quick, yes, June.
Thank you for the explanation. I think I have three questions. The term fully accessible, is that explained somewhere? Do we have a definition of that? Is, are there limitations of the fully accessible?
Yes, that's a very good question, and, and Jim and I spent quite a bit of time last week really defining that. And so we do provide a definition of exactly what affordable or accessible, excuse me, is. And there is a very specific standard that is in, in building code. It's defined by the International Code Council. So we reference that specific section of the code. And there are, there's a series of guidelines that need to be met, and, and I think the most valuable part of this is that because we reference the building code, this is something that is measurable and is enforceable by your building official. So it, it's something that an architect should be very familiar with, can reference. And it's a standard that can, we can be, we can measure against. And that is enforceable by your building official, and it's, it's not something that's entirely incumbent upon the zoning enforcement officer to inspect for, because that, that'll be shared by the building official who would be inspecting for compliance with building code. Essentially, it is the highest standard available in, in building code or in any other guideline. The other guidelines out there include the Fair Housing Act guidelines, which have a, a lower accessibility requirement. This type of, of housing would also be subject to the Fair Housing Act. So another percentage of u-units would have to be accessible, but not fully accessible. And so what we're talking about when we require ten percent of units is that it's full accessibility, which means someone in a lea, in a wheelchair has, can maneuver throughout the entire dwelling unit, has access to dwelling unit. The bathroom is configured to meet their needs. The kitchen's configured to meet their needs. All switches, thermostats, any other receptacles are accessible to them. It, it's, it's the highest standard, and, and we feel that we, we've landed on something that has a high degree of accountability because of that standard. The, the language we initially used in our recommendations was universal design. And universal design is a very broad concept that includes accessibility. Unfortunately, there's no specific standard for it, so we moved away from that language and we moved towards the accessible language. Okay?
Thank you. I think you had a follow-up question.
Yeah, that, that's all excellent. I appreciate that. And then there was some description on elderly as being sixty-two and above or above sixty-two, where some people below the age of sixty-two may be eligible. And I wondered how that would be defined or how that would be put into place if they're accepted or not. And then kind of a critique with that is if there is an elderly person that is accepted into this housing because of their age and income, and if they have, I'm sorry, it gets complicated. If they have an adult child under sixty-two that is handicapped, do we have anything worth thought with if the senior passes, how would someone that's handicapped if they're not sixty-two, you know, just?
Yep. Yeah, those are all very good questions. So the, the definition of, of housing for the elderly as is defined, all the parameters of it and who's, who's eligible for that type of housing is laid out in statute. So we don't necessarily, we don't need to define it within the zoning regulations. We just need to refer to that statute. And the statute itself refers to social, the Social Security Administration in references to anyone who's eligible for disability under Social Security. So the persons that could be eligible for this housing at sixty-two and over, or those who are currently eligible for disability income from Social Security. So all we have to do is point towards both statute and then statute points towards Social Security. And, and those regu, those statute regulations govern who's eligible. There, there are typically, the administration of the housing is typically done by policy of the authority that's administering it. Meaning they can set certain income thresholds, they come up with an application, a, a waiting list procedure. Their application, they can have different metrics in their application. They can weight things differently. So that's really a policy question for the operator, and provided they're operating within the bounds of, of statute. But it, it's not, it's not necessarily within our place in the zoning regulations to, to set that policy.
Right, agree. Anything else? Welcome. Okay, Diane.
Just one comment. The concern that I have by referring to this, the regulation rather than including the language of the regulation, state regulations within our own is that regulations are particularly difficult for the layperson to find, to be able to refer to. So it's easy enough to find statutes. And I think the average person that may want to find that could find that on their own, but state regulations are just more difficult.
They, I, I understand that concern, and I, I think if we were talking about single-family housing and we had a bunch of references to statute that we expected developer of a single-family home to have to reference and navigate, that, that would be, that would really probably be more, more onerous for them. We're, we're talking about what is gonna be a relatively sophisticated developer in this case, that's gonna have a team of professionals preparing a development application or proposal. And, and so I think they're gonna have the savvy to be able to, to navigate statute. One of the other concerns I would have is when, whenever we whenever we repeat statute within zoning regulations, there's the potential that we're inconsistent, and zoning regulations are also amended on, on a, from time to time. And we don't want to end up with something that's inconsistent with statute as it's currently written. I mean, we could, we could provide regu, we could provide language such as as amended to that as a safeguard. But those regulations are fairly robust, and we don't necessarily want to have to repeat all of them, and we don't, we also don't want to be selective in, in, in reproducing those regulations within our regulations. I think we're on much more solid ground if we could point to the regulations as a whole.
And you have something really quick?
I got one question. Under the financial for these developments, CSFA or federal financing, they have their own rules under their financing, but and what's happened, I've seen, is that these developments go to CSFA loan or federal loan. And when those loans run out, now they convert back to whatever. I know these are and it says ninety-nine years. When the financing disappears or gets refinanced, is there a problem there? Under the guidelines of the CSFA, the FJ or whatever.
Yeah, Jim, I, you know, that's an interesting question. On its face, I, I don't, I don't see an issue, but I would, I'd have to. Yeah, Jim, I, you know, that's an interesting question. Uh, on its face, I, I don't, I don't see an issue, but I would, I would have to look into that to give you a more affirmative answer. So I, I understand your primary concern is uh, under a CHFA loan, if it's refinanced, uh, like how, how many years out, right? Or is there an issue that?
The mortgage. Uh, but the uh, CHFA have their own guidelines.
Yeah.
For mortgages. Uh, and workforce housing that we have in place right now on Deming Road, all those units qualify for affordable housing under the CHFA.
Because they're CHFA. Okay, so what?
CHFA finances disappear.
Yeah, yeah. I, I got you. I got you.
Is it workforce housing number or affordable housing?
Yeah, yeah. So this, this is, what we're talking about is a deed restricted unit. Those units qualify because of their, their mortgage or their financing. That's, that's a different type of qualification. Um, other, other examples of affordable housing that qualify to your, that count towards your total would be a Section Eight voucher, would be voucher housing. What we're talking about here are deed restricted units, right? Irregardless of the financing. It, it's completely independent of how they are financed. So it's a totally separate type of affordable housing. It's a different basket we're, we're working out of.
It's just the, again, the deed restrictions will apply whether CHFA, you know,
Yeah.
uh, loan gets refinanced, whatever, because they're filed on the land records.
Yeah.
And um, so, and, and we do have the language in the definition also that, you know, if uh, that the, that the uh, deed restrictions have to run, have to follow all the requirements of, of eight thirty G at the time they're filed. So, you know, we had that in the past where, you know, some of the house, some of the units we, we uh, deed restricted weren't deed restricted for long enough to qualify and such, and you know, things may change over time, but at least at the time of the de restriction, if something uh, becomes more stringent or uh, places other requirements, those will be required to be included.
Exactly. The reason why I brought it up because developments we had before that were affordable housing development that fell off the, the, the role, uh, you know, they were probably filled with CHFA money or F A T money, uh, and then fell off the role because it was a forty-year thing. And now, now it's time to become a windfall to the owners.
Yeah. All right. So because, because we just received this today, and I thank you, Francisco, for sort of uh, broad brushing it and Jim as well. I just really haven't had a chance to thoroughly read through this because I just received it as I sat down, so. And that's not slighted anyway. It's just I, I can't make a decision on this and.
And that would actually be by design. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Not, not, not giving it to you in advance at tonight's meeting, but today, this, the point of bringing it to you is an overview because this is text that staff wants to be able to post that will ultimately be a public hearing. Um, I want to remind the commission that when you can get text amendments that are proposed, for instance, based on the, the bulk of this um, pulling this together was a result of the P O C D meetings and the zoning meetings that the, the P O C D Advisory Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission had um, together and separately with regard to making some of these adjustments for ninety-nine years, some of these other things we discussed during those meetings. So um, this was not intended to be that public hearing, but instead providing to you what we um, would like to be able to post so that we could post it, send it to the regional agency for review and post it for a public hearing for that. So that's the goal of this, not that you're reading it and agree with everything on it right now and modifications can be made to text amendments when you get them. We went through that exercise several times in the last couple of years of modifying files in public.
All right, great. Okay. Will we be getting a copy of this PowerPoint or this presentation, I should say, so we can re- review it along with what we have here?
Sure. I will tell you the bulk behind today. We, Jim and I had trouble manipulating and getting it to work, so we couldn't forward it, but we can do that.
That was appreciated. Thank you. All right. So with that, do we have a, do you need a motion on this?
I just want to make sure Jim doesn't have any thoughts before you move on.
Okay.
Also.
And then after, and then we would just say direction if you feel you're okay with this one, or if you only want to look to the next meeting first, then to post it for the probably the second.
My turn. I would like to look at the PowerPoint presentation. Okay. To review it. So. Okay, so that's fine, that's fine. So well then, instead of going into January, we want to go into February with this?
So we'll, we'll come back at the, at the January eighteenth meeting. Unless you happen to have a special meeting before that, not next week's special meeting, but you know, unless some change to that meeting date. Um, because it's a discussion item, uh, and we'll um, then like.
Yeah.
To decide whether or not we can send it to the regional agency and move step for public hearing.
All right. I want to ask you a question. Do you see the urgency in us doing this sooner than February?
So that's what Jim addressed at the beginning of the meeting, that with discussion, bill for town council and moving forward with um, the, the properties that we have and the plans that are in existence, just trying to move forward.
Yeah, I guess the next, the next step would be, we would be doing a request for proposals for developers as soon as anticipating doing that, as soon as planning and zoning approves this amendment. So uh, the council is anxious to move forward on it. Again, as Maureen said, you, you're not approving this amendment. We're just advancing it for discussion and you can make adjustments to it later. So uh, we would like you to uh, consider advancing it tonight, at least to, to schedule a hearing.
Okay.
Can I, can I just get one um, more overview that I'm not sure everyone, right, of, you know, connected? That these, the, the type of housing, not to say there can't be, you know, other innovative or other types coming in, but we're talking generally about the type of housing, talking marginally more as far as being on town property. Those are town properties and the housing on town property. The Knights of Columbus is on town for created. I think, I wasn't here for it, but I think that was acquired for this purpose and that's where the, or acquired for comes in with the town property. Um, and the, we had another one, Jim, the revision.
Personal heights, yeah.
Yeah, sure. And all that bit. So I, you know, I'm just, that's the type of, of, uh, overall, the advancement.
Okay. Um, yeah. Well, so that was going to be this, the comment that I have is that um, between now and the time that we could schedule this for public hearing, still we have the opportunity to review the presentation and everything. So I can't see that uh, many modifications to the language would be made. So you have your what's being presented. So I, I don't know if it's scheduling. You have an option for motion. I do have a little goal for it. Let's go. Let's not hold things up. Yes. Um, uh, so, uh, I've got to think about. So um, uh, a motion to move forward scheduling um, the uh, text amendments as identified by F H I zoning review relating to affordable housing as recommended in P O C D and A H P for public hearing um, at the January eighteen, February first meeting. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Miller has a second and further discussion?
Just one question I wanted to look at. Uh, I noticed in here there's two parts of it, basically rental units and for sale units. And I think there's a difference in there, uh, especially on the finance side. So I'd like to see more homework in those two separate things.
Okay, fair enough. Any other questions? That one moved the motion. So all those in favor? Aye. And those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you everyone. Thank you very much. Yeah.
Thank you. Commission, commission business. We have a site plan amendment application of James Cassidy representing the D R O P group. L L C F A construction of a nine thousand six hundred square foot industrial building and related site improvements at three eighty-four Deming Road, M B L, bend ten dash two dash eighty-three dash eleven B in the B T one zone. And uh, this is uh, it's been continued. Uh, this was from the December seventh meeting for a woman item. And is this also combined with Island Booty?
No, it was separate. It's a shared driveway. They are two separate, by two different reasons.
Okay.
But they shared, they do have a shared driveway. But there, as far as we could discern, their site plans and, if I say that for the two, there, except the drive. Um, I do want to go back to the, I'm sorry. Um, Commissioner Dyken seated on this item and Steve was, Steve Yellow was present at the last meeting. Um, but he's seated tonight. We should state that he's familiar with this and present.
Steve, did you catch that? Steve Bydow?
Yep.
Okay. And were you active and present and listening and caught up to speed on this?
Yes. Yes, I was.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted that for the record. Okay, excellent. Okay. Floor is yours, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy. I'm chairman principal of firm Hal C. Pearson Cassidy. Thank you. Um, I was before you last week, uh, at which time we presented an application um, for the site land modification for property located at was four hundred and eighty-four Deming Road, uh, property of the new realty. Um, we presented our applications for the development of a new one-story ninety-six hundred square foot building located in the front of the property. Um, at that meeting, uh, we uh, continued it and granted you an extension of time, uh, because we're waiting on staff comment. Uh, we did receive some staff comments last Friday. Uh, we worked through this week and actually uh, had a Zoom meeting this afternoon, uh, with Maureen, uh, to go over the revisions and also uh, went over some additional uh, comments that came up as part of your review and her review, uh, which we addressed. Uh, I do have a full-size copies of these plans if you'd like me to hand them out with the revisions that we had discussed earlier tonight. Or if Maureen does have everything up on the screen, uh, to make it easier for you. Uh, so for the engineering comments, um, they were, I don't want to bore you with them. Um, they were.
You carried them in, right? You don't want to carry them.
I didn't bring all that.
You just want to carry them out to the booth.
I'll keep clients, so. I'll look at this three.
Okay. I'll go to get it.
The engineering. Here, uh, particularly with some changes in this one, some backups out of finance.
Yeah.
Uh, in addition to, um, because we recently rebuilt the Deming Road. Um, which the commission requires to add some locations, the public coordinating, it comes down, pairs to Deming Road. Um, there was comment that dealt with could be fully connected locations, uh, which we also clarified with engineering. So a, a lot, there, there was only from engineering aspect, there was only four comments that were provided. I think more importantly, um, comments that came from Maureen and also this commission on the last month. Uh, this is the plan on the screen, uh, on which you probably near page number three in the plan set. Um, which is only including uh, locations. So I'll get that one there. Plan location, I'm sorry, patient. Um, this will be going to a location on the plan, uh, will be to all the home requirements. Um, so again, we propose, uh, the brown, uh, edge areas, the new buildings, the one-story building located up along the frontage of the site, uh, all footprint is going to be ninety-six hundred square feet. Um, what we, what we changed, uh, since I typed the footprint, the building is still the same. So once, now two, so, um, it's supposed, uh, well, when it's changed, um, they, they gave this up. Commissioner, I can't, who was, sorry, but uh, there's a recommendation that we stone veneer that went on the bottom um, get wrapped around the tinsides and the back. Uh, we took a look at that. I mean, it, it is an expensive proposition and so we ultimately we came up with and it looked better. Um, so remember on the original plan, what we're proposing is to have pavement all the way up to the rear of the building. Um, that originally was designed because we originally did this site plan. Um, to help you.
L S G.
The back is.
To the back?
Yep. Um, on the original proposal, um, when we had a two-story building, we were going to have access to a lot of it. Because uh, the grading, we no longer have access to that much of the building, so it'll be exciting. We really don't need all the additional pavement. So what we did is we cut back the pavement, just provided twenty-four foot high line and eight parking spaces along the back of the building. What this does is allows us a landscaping area of minimum of five up to twenty feet deep. Uh, in addition to, it allows us to actually swell up the grading a little bit, I think, Steve, but uh, actually helps us reduce the height of the foundation. Whereas you have sixty feet of foundation exposed before, I have both, or five, or a feet of foundation you can post. And it allows us to long the entire back of the building. Uh, to reduce the negative gradient. So it also allows us the opportunity in larger green triangular areas that have little snow storage, uh, parking hole in the back which is prominent. Um, so we thought it'd maybe be a better trade-off. Uh, this is in purpose coverage, uh, adds additional landscaping, uh, and it does ultimately shakes our screens, that portion of the foundation, which I think was one of the main injectives. Um, going, no, you don't split back out of that here, or maybe more split back there, Steve. But on the zoning sheet, the other question that came up were the uses. Um, we had originally identified, uh, the use of a front building with parking as an industrial use, uh, which required one space for every five hundred apartment, every five hundred square feet of building here. Uh, so technically it only required about twenty spaces uh, for that use. Um, your site plan, um, requirements for the B T one zone, um, uses that would could, could apply and probably are more appropriate would be either retail or office type use, uh, which has a requirement of one space for every two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, so after discussing with Maureen to make everybody look more comfortable, uh, what we did is revised is of the whole table. Can't be uploaded. We revised our whole parking table, um, for the proposed building, um, to classify as office or recast space uh, at a rate of one to two fifty, so that actually requires thirty-eight point four spaces. Uh, in addition to, there were some questions about the use of the back buildings. We went back with it back to two thousand fourteen for all those two back buildings. Uh, and we found that that point, they were actually approved as warehouse and distribution space. And at that time, your warehouse and distribution, uh, facilities required one space for every five hundred, whereas the current regulation requires one thousand. But we put in the requirement of one to five hundred, um, so we required an additional twenty-four point two. So in total, uh, you needed to have sixty-two point six spaces, so say sixty-three spaces. Um, so we did back on the zoning plan, uh, number one, we left the whole front parking area alone. Um, this provides you about thirty-one spaces along the front side of the site. In addition to this new drive aisle, uh, we added the eight parking spaces, uh, to the back of the site, I'm sorry, nine parking spaces to the back of the site. So you have forty parking spaces right around the building that's being constructed. In addition to, we kind of took a look at the prior approvals to try to figure out what's actually approved out there for parking, uh, although um, there's not a lot in the oil lines racing out there, trying to keep them better representation of what they, they need for parking based upon uses that are out there. So in red on this plan, we identified our existing parking areas that would need to get restripped or new parking areas, uh, like along this side of the building, uh, technically there's no parking strike there right now. Uh, and then on the far side, uh, we identified some additional parking for additional twenty-three parking spaces to bring it to your sixty-three parking spaces in total. So uh, with that reconfiguration, uh, and uh, the. and uh the redistribution of the uses, uh we now meet in uh we requirement of zoning regulations event based on prior use uh and we'll say uh more, I'd say appropriate use. Uh we can't guarantee it's going to be retail. Again, we have no perspective attendance for it, so I'm just trying to get an approval, so we have something that we can market. Um so for the site plan, um that's the majority of what was changed. Uh at the last meeting, uh there was also a comment that they would like us to take a look at the landscaping along frontage, uh because there's been a lot of improvements in the landscape of Deming Road. Uh what I represent is really having the time to take a good look at the landscaping on along Deming Road. I have talked to build clients, uh and they're more willing to accommodate. They want these buildings to look nice also. Uh so they're more willing to work with the commission of staff uh to find something that's more appropriate, but we didn't feel there's something that we wanted to brush in the course of the meeting. I kind of want to go out there and see what's been done up and down the road, so we can kind of compliment what's been done the road, that I think that's something we can work out with staff. So that's basically in a nutshell what we changed uh on this application, uh since you see it last time.
Commissioner, questions at this point? I think you did a nice job so far moving it forward, and you seem to be uh coming in where there's very few differences between what you envision and what the town is officially for this parcel. Um I recently was over on Deming Road and I looked at the native uh native property there and I saw it was all clean walk and stuff and it looks like it's best already to go.
Yeah.
And it looks, it looks really nice because there was a point that it was a little dodgy back there, but um so I could see where they're taking their time and really wanted to turn it around. And I think the landscaping along Deming Road is really going to help you out. And uh it's it's an interesting idea about the back of the building with the concrete and putting along small shrubs there. Um I don't know if, I don't know how much visually or con- concrete will show.
So we've taken about two feet off the foundation. We originally was sixty feet of exposed foundation. We're down to
So now it's about four feet. Yeah, so uh it's a nice hollies and stuff in there. I think you're gonna, it's nice and thick.
We planned everything about four feet on center along the back.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. Uh Commissioners, Diane, did you have anything that you might want?
Uh looking at the the landscape plan. Um there's an area identified as a row of dead evergreen. Are they gonna stay dead?
Oh, yeah, so well, they're getting removed and that's why we have the stagger
Maybe you're zombie, please.
I think you're talking about that one here?
Yes.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's a bunch of bodies there that are dead. Um they're getting removed and they're, we're putting a new head roll, uh a red head roll on the south side of our site.
So they won't.
Then
Dead ones.
Backs of life.
If there are dead ones there for that.
Yeah. Makes it fire.
Just maybe it was the note on the plan.
Yeah, they're just to refresh.
Then new planting in place of dead.
Yeah, so uh that maybe I identify what those are gonna be, that they're gonna be you know, again. And then just thinking of the sightlines and the sizes that the trees will come um wondering about whether or not it would make sense to switch the sugar maples with the flowering dogwoods. Flowering dogwoods will tend to stay smaller.
Sure. Uh step, so what's possible can be along the that are bold or bold.
Yeah, I just, I think my biggest concern about this stop is the traffic, that interception.
And so because your road was being and we were going through this firstment of property and we had to do something with the driveway. We had worked with staff at that point to realign this driveway to make it so they were happy. If you recall, there was a very peculiar intersection where we had inbound lane that was right opposite of Episcopal Hill. They had outbound lane that was full access right or left. So we realigned it. Um so you know, now now we're coming down Deming uh headed eastbound, we have that dedicated left uh into uh Episcopal, you have bypass. Um so we have a straight in uh at that 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 location or just to the to the east of it. But you'll notice we don't have a right turn out at this point, so you can't try to make that crazy maneuver to go over to Episcopal. Uh but that's something we have worked diligently with your engineer department uh to make sure that all got done before the room got completed and so.
My thought is, excuse me, with the trees, is that the maples are just gonna naturally have fall or cannot be that potentially be the sideline issue for the area that there's all green, so.
Where would the staff, but I don't use some type of alternate tree, I don't know, I'll put it just something available there or ground.
Right on. Um the parkings, the nine parking spots that you have. Where is the entrance to get into this building? Are there going to be several doors where they can enter? Because these people want to park here. Are they gonna walk around the building, go into the front? Are they gonna walk around their sidewalks? Are they gonna come?
So there's thirty-one parking spaces uh in front of the building right now. Okay, so we figured these thirty-one would be used more, majority would be used for this new building.
Okay.
The way we kind of looked at this back portion uh was there was actually parking spaces here right now.
Right.
So we just kind of rotated them out, so they can either be number one utilized by the lower section or overflow. If we don't have enough parking, you'll find at that point, if someone did use us or flow like a plague or something, they would have to walk around. Um we couldn't consider making a sidewalk action up up the side of the driveway to the pond if necessary.
So you have a few buildings in there that might be a good idea for safety reason. Just a thought. Good.
Anyone else at this time?
Yes, uh I uh discussed the that we've gone down the property line here because the the next purpose that I'll tell, the next one is the residential property. And then the opposite place, I guess, after that. Uh and we're looking more looking to block especially this residential uh from the buildings here. I I'm assuming that's definitely one of the out there and I'll do that one zone here where we're showing the vehicle, I guess. Forget it, so we're looking, we can continue down. Uh once you get much further than past the first, the first existing building, it gets to be a little bit thick vegetation there, so maybe a little bit difficult to plant anything additional, but we can, you know, have some work with the outpens and we can have people back for that for so that we up. At least the residential property in a moment. We don't need much of it all the way to the old sewer line up. Like, look at our crop line there. Uh
I'm sure we'll figure that out. With staff.
Hey. The again, you know what I mean? Uh and all like parting place in there, maybe I want just like to see it separated from the residential. Well, go.
What's your next playoffs? All right, Maureen.
Um if I may suggest in that, on that regard, um perhaps the um modification be the plan be to extend the planting along the easterly property line um where there's not existing mature vegetation to fill in, where there's not existing mature vegetation to the satisfaction of staff. Which is nice against
Training. That's saying there was screening, that's a okay, basically.
Uh to to but to create screening. Um I did want to just, they, they, I believe, uh Mr. Cassidy noted this, but um throughout the last couple of days, he's been working with us as well as with Mike, our town engineer, to satisfy his comments. He did have some lingering comments with regard to filtration today that uh he had told me, I went and talked to him and he said he takes no exception to a condition being that they, they be resolved, they're permitting with his, those are the types of details that he's just think that he'd be looking at the soil once they're digging. For some of that data and information, um that pavement restoration be coordinated with and to the satisfaction of the deputy department of public works. That's me, but you know, um because that road is, we discussed that last week, the road is newly paved and and redone. Want to make sure that gets done. Um as Mr. Cassidy mentioned, um for the record, the uses of the building, they don't suspect building, um but the uses need to be compliant with the BT one zone. Um he explained parking that we've discussed, um and that uh that any uses that need approval, give up. All uses should get zoning approval. Any uses, there are also listing special permit uses that we need to recharge zoning commission or if they need different parking, you know, they have to go through the right processes. Um they install the abtec filters, which I believe they added that to the plan for us.
Yeah, it's already been detailed on the plan.
Oh, right, you actually had put it on the but that would be a requirement, you know, it's out of the plan, but required, and the soil erosion drills we installed in this section will be open.
I'm supporting. Anyone else? The note on the agendas that we need to decide this time.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, they've done a lot of work and it seems like they're willing to work with us as we move on borders or after so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
Is there any issue opinion or is there interest to vote for an approval need to work with staff? I I think all the I think all the conservative mission been brought up, it seems this, uh it seems that the advocates want to work with staff and with the engineering department and public works and um uh the soil erosion uh is going to be um that goes back
That's a standard.
That's a standard.
That's a standard.
I know. Well, I mean, uh my concerns at this point have all been addressed in that. And I'm sure it'll be a great project once we're cleared. But I mean, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about it. Joe, you also, anybody? Okay, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to um approve the site plan amendment uh subject to um staff comments um and uh items discussed this this evening uh for the application of James Cassidy representing a native realty group LLC for construction of a ninety-six hundred square foot industrial building and related site improvements at three eighty-four Deming Road block block ten dash two dash eighty-three dash B in BT one zone.
If he has clarified, I'd um change that to the commercial building, will it? Because it is
Oh, I don't Yes, I'll amend the amendment. Uh I'll amend the motion to refer to the building as a commercial rather than industrial.
And again, I like all all conditions that's discussed there to be put on the map as noted. Uh so any conditions that's in any conditions staff has be put onto the maps. And uh so when they go out there and inspect it, they know it's supposed to be there.
Okay, so we have a motion and we know it's amended, it's called a client. Okay, do we have a second? Do us a second?
A second.
Oh, Ms. Miller. Um for the discussions, uh Scott and Steve, you have anything? Steve Bydell, do you have any more?
No, I don't.
And we'll move the motion. All those in favor, I
Sorry.
So the boost, so moved. Okay, could be all. All right, next up, don't go too far, because we have a site plan movement application of James Cassidy representing a new group LLC for construction of a forty-five hundred square foot industrial building and related site improvements at three seventy Deming Road, MBL ten dash two dash eight and the BT one zone. All right. So now this is your neighbor.
So good evening. Uh again, for the record, my name is Jim Cassidy, professional and chairman principal from the house, see Pearson Cassidy, office located at six thirty Main Street, promo. Um here tonight, we're upsetting um the new uh group LLC, uh who is the owner of a property located at three seventy uh Deming Road, we reported last month. Uh requesting a site plan modification uh that we actually had back in two thousand and fourteen, I believe it was. Um at that point, we had a proposal for a three thousand square foot building on the front portion of property. This property was the, still is the main office for native foundations, uh it's been basically the split of the family, so they kept this one and one of the other natives, both over on the Stelrod. Uh so there's two different shops, but they they still operate one of the shops down here. Um we're back before you, uh what's happened is explained last time. There were some modifications to the property line. Um this particular piece of property, as uh shown in red on the screen outlined in red, uh so picked up some additional units um for a four hundred uh Deming Road uh making it a little more uniform shape, giving it a more frontage one, the front portion of the property. In addition, there's a good photo, you can actually see on the upper portion or to the west, uh the original driveway. Uh you can actually see the new driveway constructions, you can actually see how far it actually got the door, that would go up to the feet from where it originally was. So we're back before you uh for the modification to the previous approval um to allow us to expand the building uh to one-story building, expanding it from three thousand up to forty-five hundred square feet, so it's about a fifteen hundred square foot expansion on that building. Uh last month, we presented our application also. Um and at that time, um we were waiting on staff comments. Uh we granted an extension um to this meeting uh to receive comments and to address comments uh similar to the last application. We did receive uh some, an email comments last Friday, we worked through them earlier this week. Uh and actually, uh as I made before me, and discussed the comments and the revisions I made, so I'll just briefly go over them. Uh and as far as saying how another tree, a worth of plants, uh pretty pretty good review and maybe, yeah. Um so on the plan, I'd say the locations are a little less than the last ones. Um but some kind of some other major comments, um you could, the comments basically were the new, the commission pointed it out. Uh along the backside of the building, this building is a higher. Um so it actually has long shores outside storage of the new building. Uh those, although it's not intended to be regularly storage, you'll do so on a regular basis. Uh there was concern because the garage locations were kind of in public with some parking spaces. So in this particular plan, we had more than that to park, so what we did is we brought a couple of the parking spaces that were opposite those doors. Um so they will not get blocked uh see access to those for all shores. So we did lose two parking spaces overall by doing that, but we still uh meaning to see the overall requirements and design regulations. In addition to, there was a comment along the frontage, it was noted that I had two spaces on the east side that actually were slightly encroaching over the ten-foot um setback requirement for parking along Deming Road. Uh what we did is we eliminated those two parking spaces. Uh we actually added two additional parking spaces, additional, we placed those two parking spaces on the far west end of the parking lot, up against the retaining wall. Still meeting all the buffering requirements uh to the enjoying property uh that's off to the west of this. Um so again, two eliminated here, two add here, so we're still having a little same number parking spaces to the twenty-four. Uh all the other comments were engineer-related, very similar to what we said in past time. Um they just wanted verification that we're going to work with staff, utilities going to the road, that will make the problem theirs. Uh they wanted to have for a certain management report, which we provided, uh this Maureen convention, um sort of earning uh one some that basically they want us to filtration, uh those will provide them uh as condition approval. Um there is a question about San Gary Sewer Service onto the existing building. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. Uh if you were to take a look at the site plan, by the force of this enforcement, this building is actually a lot lower than the road, which comes through this building. We just cleared up the notation to indicate that that force man is going to be worked around this building and the existing portion would be eliminated, so no long portion of the building. So the, again, the engineering comments were minor in age. So the, again, the engineering comments were minor in age, um. Similar to last application, uh, after talking to more, we wanted to kind of clarify the overall apartment requirements. Um, so, so until we get on the last one, we updated the parking data table, uh, and what we did is we changed the use. Which maybe didn't happen on this, sorry, on this printout, um, but on the plans, it should be updated to say, uh, retail, uh, office use. I'll hopefully get updated correctly, um, but we changed it to a re, uh, one space, should be on sheet number two. Your honor.
We said it wasn't on the.
So we, uh, we, I'm just here to finish up, I want to apologize. Now they'll back up one sheet, one more sheet. So we changed the, and the, the parking data table, we changed the use from, uh, from industrial to office, uh, commercial. Um, and we changed the partner requirements on that, uh, from one to five hundred to one to two fifty. Um, trying to flip back to page here, I'm sorry. So, uh, what that did is it bumped up the number of required parking spaces for the front building, uh, to eighteen parking spaces. Uh, we left the back building alone, based upon the prior approval, so there is, uh, is basically being under a warehousing type use. Um, it's one space per three thousand, so eleven spaces. So in total, we can be in the total of twenty nine spaces. Uh, with the elimination of the two parking spaces for those garage doors, we're at thirty three parking spaces. So we're still over, um, we required. Clarify the uses, potential uses of the future building. Uh, in addition to, uh, last one's meeting, um, the commission makes comments once again about landscaping. Uh, as I represented with the last one, this owner also is more than willing to work with staff and the commission. Um, to enhance the landscaping along the front beach when it was building. I'll also know, um, I think Mr. Zigmont had mentioned about landscaping on this side. Uh, we went back out and actually took a look at it and we actually surveyed it, we really surveyed up to here, so we were showing only the other rays up to the here. But they actually extend all the way back. Uh, they are in the joint use property, but I mean, it's, it's difficult to add additional landscaping here, because this is our utility quarter. Our power, gas, our water all comes through that area. Uh, but it's a very significant hydro, uh, that's presently running all the way down through there. Um, there's also a comment about what's going to happen with the existing trucks. Uh, if you've been by the site, they have several concrete pump trucks and dump trucks, uh, that they're storing along the front of the site. Uh, we designated the area to the back, um, showing eight spaces, uh, to accommodate those vehicles. Uh, spaces are going to be twelve by thirty, um, so they're appropriately sized to house those vehicles. Uh, but you may have also noticed over, you know, over the past couple of years, their number of vehicles out front has been reduced. Uh, that has to do with the breakup of the company, um, so some are stored over at another site across town. Uh, and then there's like a floor that are actually left, but we want to make sure we have more than that with area. Um, so we did accommodate those to the rear and built, uh, other ones, uh, we have remained a lot, no changes to these plans. Uh, I think what I feel I got from the commission last time is very happy, um, with the architecture of the building, um, so. Uh, we're going to stick, we'll stick with the design of the building. Um, quite honestly, uh, before last week's meeting before you, the two applicant, the two applicants didn't know about the other application. So, uh, since such time, we have provided each other with the building design, ask them to coloring that would kind of complement. The two buildings, so they're willing to do that also. Uh, but that, as of last week, they really didn't know about the two applications. Uh, but they are, but they are willing to work. Well then.
It's hard, you know, they going higher you.
As far as the landscaping goes, I'm looking at the architectural for the rear and I know you have the, looks like garage doors there and then you have one. This is on page, uh, I think it's the last page, A, A two. So the bottom rendering, all right, maybe they can do a little bit of landscaping between the garage doors and the entrance doorway. There's not like one or whatever, just kind of, because it looks nice when you're attempting on the other sides.
Yeah.
You know, but at least that one has nice little shrubbers and stuff breaking out the wall. Okay, great.
Oh, yeah, so. Parking that they did in the back was. Sorry. Uh, the parking, we eliminated two parking places in the back. But it was, was great, but there's part place not a width of the garage door. So, uh. So I mean, I mean, I. If we could shift the parking places where they, I, I mean, it gets in front of the garage door the same width. We, 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 we can play around, we can actually play around. Yeah, I can see you won't do that, but, uh. Man, is this cross easement across maintenance between the two properties in place? Yeah, it is, and there's actually, uh, covered, so that was one of the other engineering comments on this one is where we're providing power from. Uh, as part of that reline of the driveway, we actually had to realign all the power and put a transformer down at the lower section and provide every source with the heat vent. So that the three seventy property can tie in to it. So that all these events are already in place as part of the lot line modification, we did that once, it's two years ago at this point.
Another point is that I see on this particular rendering that we do not have any kind of security lighting over the entrance rights in the back of the building. Not so much from the front, because I know that'll be ample and lit, but on all the buildings.
Yeah, so we talked about this. Each one of the passes.
Yeah, I mean, that probably carried on what to do.
Well, there's no issues on the back of that building, but there is, there is a part.
Yeah, so.
I'm going to act, the access drive.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure that would be adjusted, okay. Anyone else have questions, concerns? Okay, let's go. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Lori, I should ask you, and now I'll ask Steve, Steve Biella, did you have any questions or concerns before Lori?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, go ahead.
So with this filming, how many access and vision, if I'm wrong, um, if you can correct me, but. Um, I just want to know that the lower level, I believe, was presented as storage and therefore any use of that. With the meat zoning review. Before they, we hide it as a manner of storage. It's storage, right? Yeah, but it does have the garage doors, so it's right for somebody to the side, they want to do something underneath it. You would not be approving a use of that area right now. Um, the, in, again, reiterating the comments, uh, from before, the town engineer. Said he takes no exception to the condition. Being resolved, the, his, uh, concerns being resolved, private permitting, uh. Pavement rest- restoration be restored and coordinated with the, uh, deputy director of public works. Um, ab tech filters be required. Um, the u- uses be compliant with BT one zone and, um, the retaining wall require certification for carpeting. Which is a requirement, it's more for the record so that everybody knows that, uh, and then the building, um, has been modified to comply. With the typical commercial uses at one to two fifty, yes, suggestions. So makes it so typical uses, same thing uses.
Would you suggest, um, saying the building is show, so that's true.
As well, BT one. And then any other, there was there, I'm sorry, but I don't recall. Um, did you say landscaping to the satisfaction of staff? Want to make sure.
And then if staff has any questions, they need to, to commission.
Make a motion to approve the site plan, site plan amendment application of James Cassidy. Representing native group of safer construction of forty five hundred square foot industrial building and related site improvements at three seventy Deming Road. Block, block ten dash two dash eighty three dash ten in the BT one zone. Subject to, um, staff comments and the comments that we've discussed, uh, as commission this evening. And to be noted.
Okay, and that, that includes yours, that is, that concludes the motion, so do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Zigmont. Uh, further discussion? Then all was in favor, I.
Right.
They'll suppose, so moved, okay.
Thank you.
Yay, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a site plan amendment application of N C B K East Berlin LLC for the property at one ninety one Commerce Street. For outside storage and related site improvements and that's the I know. Okay. Oh, I know. Yeah, I know. Have that one already.
Thank you, dear, thank you.
Good, good evening, how are you today?
How are you?
Oh, good, good.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, just when the lights goes on, cameras roll.
Good evening, everyone, for the record, my name is Chris Velasquez, I'm a licensed professional engineer of solely engineering. Offices located in Monroe, Connecticut, here at the African, that is N C P East Berlin LLC. Uh, they stand for Newcastle Building Products, uh, they currently have an existing facility. At one ninety one Commerce Street in Berlin, Connecticut, but come here to talk to you about painting. So Newcastle Building Products is a building materials and lumberyard that services large, uh, commercial clients. They're not like a Home Depot where they already, a person comes in and out and, and buys, I don't know, like a piece of pipe or. Uh, one random board, they're doing large scale, they're building a home, they're going to supply all the materials from now, roofing materials, things of that nature. It's on a, a much larger scale than your typical, um, Home Depot or Lowe's per se. So they have a securely successful, uh, successful facility at one ninety one Commerce Street. And they're looking to expand their operations, uh, quite frankly, they're running out of room. Uh, they have their, their stuff scattered throughout the parking lot, their employees are forced to park on the street. Um, there's not a lot of room for loading deliveries, they're, they're growing so fast and so successful, want to remain in Berlin. So they're looking to expand their existing facility. So again, the site's located here. At one ninety one Commerce Street, there's currently two existing site drives, a twelve thousand three hundred square foot building. That is to remain as part of our application, um, and then there's a series of existing storage located in the rear of the site. This portion in the back that you see on the site plan is currently wooded, so there's about eight thousand square feet plus or minus. Uh, outdoor storage now, and our application is proposing additional thirty five thousand five hundred and sixty. A square feet of outdoor storage. Um, so again, there's two site drives that come in from the site, um, there's currently just a parking lot, nothing is really striped per se. There's maybe a few spaces that are currently stripped. Um, and we're proposing to essentially expand this outdoor storage area to the rear. I'll get to the grading during the plan in a minute, but the ground slopes down to the rear. Um, we are, there are wetlands located in the rear of our site, uh, you can't see on your screen, but there is, uh. Left one line in the back here, um, and there's fifty foot buffer, we did go to the land law's commission on November fourteenth. Um, that's the second time that we were approved in November fourteenth by the law's commission. Um, the work is located, uh, outside of the fifty foot buffer from the wetlands, so the wetlands commission was satisfied with our plans. Um, so again, the plan is to install retaining wall around the sides of the outdoor storage facility. Or the outdoor storage area, excuse me, there is no building being proposed for this application, if you want to make that clear as well. Um, we are simply expanding the parking lot in the rear, thirty five thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. Constructing a retaining wall on top, the retaining wall is going to be a safety fence, because there is, uh, six to nine foot grade change. Depending on the area of the wall, so we don't want anyone or any materials to fall over the back of the wall. There's a series of lighting holes, which I'll get to, and keep the facility, uh, for safety at night, but there's really not. Not spending any deliveries or anything of that, has normal business hours. Um, and again, we would maintain all of the, uh, currently shown entrances, a lot of the parking room building. Uh, but I did want to have a discussion on the parking, so. Currently, rear parking ranks, um, we need one space per four hundred square feet, that's for outdoor storage. And for the existing building, that ends up with about seventy eight spaces. So we've had a pre-application meeting with the town, uh, staff, thank you, extremely helpful so far, by the way. Um, in September and seventy eight spaces for this type of operation is not really warranted, it's a, uh, it's aggressive, it's excessive. Um, for the current build out of the lumberyard buildings, uh, facilities, as again, I mentioned before. They're not having a steady flow of, uh, full average Joe customers that are coming in, they're selling to large scale operations. They're getting shipments, they're sorting them out, and then they're shipping them out to various job sites. So we, uh, looked into reducing the parking requirement and utilized, uh, data from the I T manual. Provides, uh, parking, uh, studies on various uses. So we used the eighty fifth percentile from the I T manual, which is for the use of building materials and lumberyards, which is exactly what this is. And, uh, utilizing that, it raised the requirement to one space per thirteen hundred and thirty three square feet. So that yielded us around forty, forty two parking spaces. Our current plan shows eighty two in total, but thirty eight of those are deferred. So we, um, have essentially striped spaces here that were going to strike and against the building and one row in the back. But this entire row along the, uh, side of the facility and then the back and this little short row here. Are all going to be deferred or asking the commission to allow us to defer them. And then say in the future, a different use comes in, um, or they need them for whatever reason, then those spaces would be striped. So at this point, we're only showing the forty four spaces to be striped, but we do have the room to strike the additional, uh, thirty eight spaces. If we are to have to abide by the, uh, four hundred square foot parking space, sort of four hundred square foot per parking space requirement. That the town currently lists. I apologize, that was a little confusing.
I don't know, I don't know, it's just parking lots, no.
So there are, we're proposing three loading spaces, so essentially, this is at that end, the trucks come into the site, either entrance, they move around the back. There's two loading spaces, there's also like a lane, and then to offload the product, be a forklift, spider list. And then they hang to the facility, and then anything that has to go inside, there's an additional loading space located where the building kind of makes a wing. And the truck came back in there and offloading, you can have to go physically inside of the building. A lot of the roofing materials and they use are stored outside, a lumber is stored outside, um, it's just some, some items that obviously have to get stored in the building as well. So that is our site plan, if you give me one second, I will bring up our operating.
What she does.
Uh, two point two one.
May I ask you a question while you're getting lunch now? Um, how many employees work at this facility?
And I'm not sure of that at the moment, but I'm happy to ask our client and report back to the commission, um. I have to imagine that's around twenty employees, but that, that is just, it could be more, I haven't had to ask them, they could be exact number.
You said that the roofing and lumber items, uh, supplies would be outside, is it covered at all from the elements? They had a canopy?
Uh, no, it's really not covered, so a lot of lumber may come like shrink wrap during like a tie like wrap, which protects it briefly, but a lot of the stuff is probably treated. But a lot of the stuff is probably treated, the roofing elements are going to be exposed to the, or the roofing items are gonna be exposed to the elements uh, by nature, because they're gonna go on the roof. So those aren't covered. But at this point, we aren't proposing any covered uh, outdoor storage since uh, a lot of it just comes out of pallets. So they'll, there'll be a truck that comes in the morning, they'll unload the pallets from the truck into the outdoor storage uh, facility. And then um, customer will order maybe fifty things from this pallet and then a hundred from this pallet. And they'll go pull from each pallet, or another truck, and then it goes out. So a lot of people use the facility like delivery drivers, but there's not a lot of, certainly so many people who actively work there on full time staff. It's a lot more deliveries than doing it.
Thank you. Is there a sales um, office here too, or is it just strictly? So when you said the customer will order some of this, some of that.
Right.
Do they come in and speak with someone and tell them what they want? Uh, only was I'm asking is if there's forty-four place places to park. And you have twenty, twenty employees there, then you have twenty-four spaces. If this is a continuous sales where people go in, not like something like Home Depot, but where they go in and they look at the merchandise, I'm just wondering if you're gonna have enough places to park.
No, I believe we will um, airify this site plan, so.
There, this is not a sales, uh, sales type of thing where people come out and look at the items?
Uh, so you have the ability to do that, but um, like say you're a contractor and you're building, you're building a home. Um, you have the ability to come in and maybe, maybe you're missing a few pieces of lumber. You can definitely do that. And you can definitely go and meet with some sales staff and like see some books that they may have and material of that nature. But again, the majority of this is uh, either the purchase order put in or uh, fifty boxes of roofing shingles and you need to get delivered and super heavy. So they have to go out on a truck anyways. So again, the majority of the business is the deliveries in and out. But you do have the ability, if you need to, to go there and pick up a few items or stuff in the store. So but there's, there's adequate, uh, let's find out. We believe we've added adequate parking around here and along this side of the building to allow that to happen. Thank you for the help.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Know a bit, uh, a little bit, uh, I do remember the, coming to this commission before. And the number of cars parked out on Commerce Street right now, uh, around the whole circle down there, did it that end, all the way up the side of the street. Uh, what I've seen is more than twenty cars. Uh, so I think the employees did more than twenty. Uh, the other thing is there was stipulations with the approval of this property. Uh, and everyone had a, all of the interior had a beige style. A fence, uh, high enough that the material wasn't stacked, well, the fence. And you know, you couldn't see it from everywhere in the world. They've been stacked to the, to the highest they can stack it. There's truck steps that uh, stand on the property now. Uh, that's the picture you just showed. Uh, there's trucks, the trucks, trailers parked on property. Uh, so the stipulations that we put in when we approved this hasn't been uh, due to what we approved. Uh, so there have been violations out there. Uh, again, hopefully this is a bite of the project again. And that those stipulations can be put on the maps. Unlike we've been requiring that there is no question what's supposed to be happening out there. Uh, this pro, this project has turned totally different than what was approved. And now you're adding more due to, to approval. So I would go back to your old approvals and and look what was approved and what's right, the, the, the stuff that was asked to be done there. Uh, and also address that in this project. Because it, you know. And like I said, we gotta get that employee account because I'm sure there's more than twenty. Uh, just seeing the number of cars parked out there every day. Uh, and it's a, it's a big facility now. And then I mean, improved business, vastly, which uh, is quite for that building and what that building used to be. Uh, it's a great improvement. Uh, with the truck traffic coming out of there now. Uh, I ask if the owner may, because it's not a, a traffic police thing, that when these trucks go up for Old Street to Middle Street and take a left or right, down to Route nine or down to ninety-one, not to come across Main Street, East Berlin. Uh, because they've been very, very much speeding on the Main Street, East Berlin, this traffic on that development. Uh, and it's easier for them to go right out to Middle Street than it is to turn down uh, Little Village Main Street. Uh, so I don't know if the owner would put a little sign out there at the exit of the driveway, you know, using Berlin Street only, whatever. Uh, but because it grew so big, it's become a problem. You know, uh, other developments in there. Uh, leaving during the day or or our stuff is, is become busy, busy, busy development down there. Uh, so any improvement in the area would have to be regulated somehow.
Maureen, um, because this is a, Tim brings up an interesting point, that Commerce Street was before, before the outside uh,
Storage.
Storage or whatever. Well, we had cleaned that up, they had, did they not comply with what, what, what the old stipulations that we had on them regarding.
On this particular property, I've never had an enforcement issue with this property.
Oh.
And this is our, as an enforcement uh, complaint where when I was CEO, that I went out to investigate this property because I didn't have any complaints with regard to it not being.
Well, so I, I'm sorry, I must have been embarrassed with the other.
There, there are several properties, um, on Commerce Street, uh, only one of which that we most recently in the last couple of years dealt with uh, with the contractor.
Yeah.
Um, and actually, the file released is being delayed. Uh, on your agenda, this is at the end of the street on the left. This is a sign, Route nine is to its north. You have that on it on the screen earlier, I can take the, the aerial view. But with regard to the outside storage, the zoning regulations were amended a couple of it. Uh, and then into the thousand twenty, we actually have a copy of the zoning regulations in case anybody needed a reminder of, uh, the allowances to clean up the lane. It was two-fold.
Yeah.
Both, we had trouble administering the language that existed outside storage for industrial zone uses. As well as at the same time, we have a specific industrial zone use that we were trying to make sure the correct parameters were in place. So you modified it a bit as well as just as cleaning it up. And that's what allows for them to propose this outdoor storage. That's why they met with staff beforehand and went through, um, the regulations and compliance with, you know, the behind the building screen in that way, as well as the natural buffer that's there with the the wetlands and the wetland planting and Route nine and the bulk of the, the buffering existing tree lines that exists. I'm sure, um, the engineer can speak more to those, the specifics of what can and can't be seen and with regard to the um, modifications from the staff's standpoint. We were approaching this as they're found to be not compliant with the ability to park become the site because of the way the existing storage is. And by creating a dedicated storage area further to the west on the site, the site, the goal and what, you know, we hope is comes to fruition as the existing onsite parking, as it as they show, you know, onsite parking to be can actually be used for parking instead of storage materials as it is now. And that will should free up some of the street. Um, again, by their, the pre-application meeting, um, when I believe the owners, the operators were there at that meeting, there were several of us at that meeting.
Believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember all the parties that were at the meeting, it was a departmental of with the applicants coming in. And they were saying, you know, this is so that if we do the parking as required without defraying some of it, it is slowing. Because we just don't have that need. He's not here to speak to that, to the thing which I, you know, might, is expected. But that's where, this is shouldn't. Nobody really loves paved land, it's being used. Pay it if you need it, but not being used. And that's where the idea of basically defraying the parking, unless it's bound to be needed, at which case the zone, generally speaking, when parking gets deferred, if it's shown on a plan, the zoning officer can port, can order it to be done. It doesn't have to be an action through the zoning commission, the zoning officer says, we're finding you need parking. Time to pay, time to strike that out with paving.
So I guess my question, they don't use it for parking, is it gonna become a storage area, which creates the same problem that they have right now, because that would be on the side of the building. Central by this, and it's, I'm sorry, it's a mess. I mean, you have everything everywhere and you have trucks going in and out of there. But if you need that part open without parking, is it gonna become a storage area?
In acting was a question I had with regard to the plan. Will it be pervious or will it be paved regardless of the stop, strike for parking? I had, I had pretty agreed about in the meeting, I thought it would be pervious.
So the area is gonna be paved, this is all existing. Where, if you see the dash lines on the site plan, this is all existing that we um, would strike if needed. And again, that's very good points now. The intent is that all the storage is in the rear, as designated on this plan. And um, that it, we have a fence around the area, it's very clearly shown where that is. And I apologize, I was not aware of any violations of the property, whether, there wasn't the conditions of the approval.
And the conditions were fencing height, uh, which you can see from all property and stuff like that. And I, I didn't realize just how much the, in my head, remember that we just did the, the outside storage over again. Uh, you know, the longer it meets the standards of the outside storage, I guess. That's good. So you're, you're saying that all that area back there is will be paved?
That's correct. So this, again, this is existing pavement as it is uh, to this extent, where my hand is. And this makes it, she's back, like you see, that it goes a little farther actually to right here. And where the dark um, area is, and then all this dot in the back will be new. The intent is that all the storage is in the rear. There's a significant fur from the wetlands, from the, can be be from the wetlands. We have all the trees, we're, we're keeping in the front, we're keeping the tree line that's shown along the side here, uh, this side as well. So the intent is, they're crammed in there right now. You, you clearly got, you've evolved, seen it, you've gone out there. Uh, so our intent is that by freeing up and able to move the stuff that's currently uh, over here in the back into a designated area, now we can pull the public employees off the street, park them here, park them on the other side of the building. It could, it puts the storage out in the back, no one sees it, it's better operational for our client. Um, that's again, the intent of our, our application.
So what is the intent, once you move where that storage is now on the side, which could be parking, once you put the, the um, additional park, uh, storage in the back, what are they gonna do with that area? Leave it there?
We're just going to leave it, because again, if we do need the parking, we need to have the ability to strike this. We're not gonna remove that pavement and then have to go put it back if the zoning portion also requires it.
So it will not become a storage area?
It will not.
You should run out of room in the back.
I believe we're also nearing the, there's a limit, I believe, on outdoor storage percentage. So that is calculated with our square footage is here. So I think that's what we're showing at the point.
Maureen, anything else?
Um, I guess my comment on, on that would be if, you know, usually we see deferred parking, still that we can keep pervious surface. Um, if it's already a pervious, what? Why not strike it, because it's there, it's already there, it exists. Any, uh, previous meetings, and that's why I have questions asked tonight. Thought that, that where they wanted it was going to be in pervy, pervious. Unless you have a response to that. I would suggest to get why not, or not get. Rather than defer it.
State Biola, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Um, I will note that they, it is a must decide, it will be in the last grade of the meeting before. So if there are outstanding concerns or conditions, you could have staff comments that came in, uh, apartments as well. Um, we didn't find anything other than, you know, in those only regs as far as the, the outdoor storage regs, it's reading to your assumption, basically is the gist of it. So that's an evaluation and for the permission to make. Um, but have no other exception to staff conditions being accepted prior permitting. And then, uh, but if you do need more time or you want some answers to some of those questions, they would through the January eighteen meeting.
Will there be trucks onsite, uh, uh, I don't know, we had a problem with the other trucks down the street and they're running all tight and we hear it or whatever. Uh, are we going to have that problem here on site? Or are they just loaded and gone out, you know, not used, I don't know. How, how worse the mechanics being done now? Because the other, the other problem was the trucks running.
So, so the other property was a, a motor vehicle used property, and that was allowed by um, variance. So it had special conditions and requirements to the variance that was approved. Um, this use is a compliant industrial zone use as a building materials supply air. I think that's the category it's in, I don't think, I actually didn't mean to bring it up today. You know, but it's, this is a category of a use that fits in the zone, so they find it's in a different way, they're being the same restrictions, pretty although we're aware. As, as with most businesses that may have their own trucks and say have of their own, they can repair them, the, you know, their trucks, I believe.
Yeah.
The state allows them to work on their own stuff, but they can't work on anyone else. It's, it's not a business that needs repair for other.
I'll take the doors right. And probably that covers all the conditions that were on this property previous height of storage and fencing and.
I mean, um.
That stuff.
Yeah, we're having to talk about those regulations, um, and I have, I guess, a couple of things. There was one in my management engineering to add, uh, inlet filter sarcasm bases, we did that. And they're showing the plans that, uh, you will have for you. Um, and I guess one question, uh, be, would be Maureen, if the commission were to pay really on this application, how long is the permit um, good for, is it two years, five years?
It would follow the statutory, um, town lines for us, site plan. So I had given a recent amendment to the statute list and the extension left. The, um, might be suspended.
Just don't worry about.
So I'm gonna really quickly read this, if you don't mind. Outside, in general requirements for industrial zones, outside storage, including the storage of merchandise, supplies, machinery and or materials, lease materials directly related to the operation of the principal use may be permitted in town general industrial and planned industrial zones, subject to site plan approval by the commission, in accordance with section thirteen. That's, and then she not look like being, it needs to be. Outside storage areas shall not extend into the area required for setbacks from the street line. Or into the required side yards adjacent to any non-industrial zone, it's compliant there. Outside storage shall be enclosed by buildings, fences, walls, landscape dirt and firms, evergreen shrubs or trees. And or other acceptable structures or screening as determined by the commission. So as to provide suitable screen from adjacent blocks or streets. In no case shall stored merchandise, supplies or other materials exceed the height of the screening. The commission has the discretion to require non-permeable ground barriers and storage covers. Um proper access to all buildings shall be maintained at all times and outdoor storage shall not interfere when accessible or required. So that's the storage regulation as it's written now.
All right.
Well, Mr. Hill, motion or no motion? Do you want to take a stand here or after the motion, just say approve the staff, the amendments or recommendations?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan amendment um with um the requested deferred parking for thirty eight spaces. Uh for the application of N C V P East Berlin LLC property at one ninety one Comfort Street. For outside storage and related site improvements in the P I zone, subject to staff comments and noting. Those um changes and items on the plans.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Zigma for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, some won't. Okay, here we go. Okay, not to the old business, um as announced uh on the agenda, there will be no discussion to be, we had for decision to be made at this meeting. Uh regarding the applications of the applications of Little House Living LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith, Esquire. Uh submitted pursuant to general, uh Connecticut General Exactions, a thirty G affordable housing use appeal. We have the phone um test uh amendment, and I assure you, and I have a paying for a site on approval book. The extension had been provided by the applicant of the tenant that you received and proposed stipulation for judgment at a special meeting. To be held Wednesday, December twentieth, twenty twenty three at seven ten on the town time between. The draft stipulation will be posted on the town website on December fifteenth, um twenty twenty three, that will be tomorrow. So under old business, there is no action, there is no discussion. And uh we'll take that up at the twentieth, November special meeting. Moving on to the executive session, who are made for executive session. All right.
We do our town attorney is, is remote, as is on the consultant who I'm called. People would be testing, who would be giving the patients with the greatest of all just living. You'll come, you'll get this up on it.
So we wanna, then, you know, we're doing with session with inviting ourselves. Anyway, our, our attorney, Jennifer Coban, and our consultant, Glenn Shawling. Shaw, I am, Shaw, Glenn.
Um knowing that our specific planner, um I'm told, we didn't need to, we didn't necessarily invited.
Okay, so this could be able to.
Yeah, it's like, an early night, first week of work, maybe. We're we end, but.
Yeah, we're critical.
So have to, uh. We would anticipate that we would be um journey to meetings, like we want to.
Yeah, so we'll be entertaining that motion as well. So anyone who want to champion that, oh, come on, just go, just say, man, Washington, you know. For Steve Viella, uh Junior, we'll have to get a special link for you to come and join us. Well.
Thank you.
Oh, well, maybe, well, maybe, yeah, for the information, all right.
All right, and I.
See, thank you.
Lockout, so we have a motion. Um we have a motion by Mr. Zigma, Commissioner Zigma, there are a second. A second, all right, second by Ms. George, all those, all those. Or all those in favor?
Aye.
There's a person, so we're gonna move to executive session.
Give me a minute to close out this, then join and open the news.
All right.
Five minutes.
Correct, and then we'll be, there will be no decisions or anything, and then after that, we'll just be exiting the meeting altogether. By the earnings meeting, together.
As soon as eight fifty five.
Eight fifty five, that's great, okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
You know, saving the link.
Okay.